As we've done in the last few meetings, I'll read the remotely conducted meetings script as it's called. And this is a, this is the meeting of the Maynard Board of Selectmen, a select board. And I will confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda of present, hey, can you hear me? Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. David Gavin?
Here.
Armand?
Here.
Melissa?
Here.
Justine?
Here.
And the same for staff. Greg?
Here.
Megan?
Here.
Becky and Mike? I see they're both here. They don't have to answer, but they're both here. And so, good evening. This open meeting of the Maynard Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting may or may not feature public comment. For this meeting of the Maynard Select Board is being convened by Zoom as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating via video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. And take care not to screen share your computer because anything you broadcast may be captured by the, by any recordings. For Board Doc meetings, all the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials of which there are none tonight, are available on Board Docs. And we recommend the members in the public follow the agenda as posted on Board Docs unless we note otherwise. We now turn into the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. And after they conclude their marks, I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called further. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If you wish to engage in conversation with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourselves. For items with public comments, after the members have spoken, I will afford the public comment as follows. I will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and address only. And once we have a list of all public commentators, I will call each by name and afford three minutes for comments. And finally, each vote to be taken this evening will be conducted by a roll call vote. So our meeting is officially opened. And the first order of public business is the public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? Okay. That's a great thing. Minutes, we have some minutes to accept. And the first set of minutes that we're seeking to accept this evening are those of our meeting from April 21st, 2020. And then move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of April 1st, 2020 as shown. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any conversation in regards to the minutes of April 22nd? Okay. We're going to roll call vote for acceptance. David?
You're on mute.
He's muted.
Assuming we're talking April 21st, I say aye.
Yes, okay. April 21st. Armand?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Justine?
Aye.
And aye, aye as well. So the next set of minutes before us are those of the April 27th meeting. And the motion before us is to move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of April 27th, 2020 as shown. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or concerns over the meetings of the April 27th, 27th meeting? Okay. For approval, David?
Aye.
Armand?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Justine?
Aye.
Yeah. Okay. Next up, we have our weekly, now weekly correspondence items of which there are five. And make a motion to accept and approve the correspondences items A through E as shown. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions about the five correspondence items of this week?
I'd just like to kind of make, I guess it's a comment in regards to the notification to the about us for the 115 Main Street, the Mall of the Building. So it's interesting that that's sitting on your agenda right now. And some of you may not be aware of some of the, what's transpiring as we go forward with this project along the way. So I just want to quickly make a comment. I think in my opinion, this project could be one of our center points for the, for the downtown area. It could make a huge difference of what that place is going to look like, what's gonna, how it's gonna make the downtown look like. And I think we're going to miss the boat if that project does not go forward. So just a small comment on my part that I'm hoping that all goes well and that project moves forward. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
I just had a quick question about the Department of Housing, the 40B that we got. So that says our percent subsidized is a 9.05%. So is that, does that mean that's our percentage in regards to low income reduced 40B?
Yeah, okay.
But that's of the 2010. That's based on the 2010 census. So once everybody fills in all of their information and hopefully sends it back, that could, that number, those numbers could change.
Great point. Because it'll be, because the subsidized housing indexed is a factor of what the median housing income is for the area. So when everyone submits, which I, if I, I don't want to misspeak, but I believe it's 80% of the, of the median housing income is what makes you eligible for subsidized housing. So it, you know, once the census is evaluated and, and then, you know, it's reported on what the new medium housing income is for the, for the area, that'll set a new bar for, for what the, you know, subsidized housing will, will be required to do. So, and, and, right, so it's good to know where, that we were getting pretty, we were close to the 10%, you know, which is often commonly referred to as safe harbor. If you have 10% of eligible SHI units. But yeah, in a year.
That could all change.
Yeah.
And we, I will say, I just looked it up. I was, I've been trying to find it, but Maynard's response rate for the census at this point is 70.7%. So not terrible.
That's not bad, yeah.
It's not bad. So, yeah.
Anybody else have any comments on the other three? I guess we're coming to. All right, we'll vote to approve them as they are shown. David?
Aye.
Armand?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Justine?
Aye.
Yeah. That's all set. Then we have, the next up is the, two items about grants, extensions. And the first one is the tree inventory project. And make a motion to approve request for extension of grant support until December 31st, 2020 in support of the Maynard Tree Shade Inventory and Management Plan. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And now I'll just read the second one and we'll, we'll go through them and then we'll vote separately. And the second one is a motion to approve request for extension of grant support until September 30th, 2020 in support of the Municipal Energy Technical Assistance Program. Do you have a second for that one?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Greg, or I mean, I'm guessing that maybe Justin, either one of you guys want to speak to these two particular items?
Yeah, I mean, Justin is on the line. It's, it's, it's pretty straightforward in that this is progress, you know, this is a project we were already undertaking. And I'm actually really grateful that, that the state agencies are allowing for this. Justin, do you want to clarify like kind of where we are with the projects and what this extension would, would allow us?
Good evening, everybody. Justin DiMarco, DBW Director. Yeah, so in the memo, I briefly discussed the two projects. They're both independent of each other. But during the COVID-19 pandemic situation, the, the state is allowing a lot of their departments to extend their grant processes because the timelines are interfering with, what we're all interfering with is our employees aren't necessarily capable of performing the same tasks and getting all these in-kind matches and paperwork in line to get the receipt of the grants. The tree inventory process was actually very close. We are 90% done. I have just reviewed the management plan. And we were lining up the in-kind match. The in-kind match is where we provide support through our staff throughout the process. And then we have to submit it based off of our salaries for each individual with fringe benefits. And then DCR, which is the state entity for this specific grant, refunds whatever hours we put forth in cash. The total grant that we were awarded was 20,000. We're very close to that. But this one was actually very labor intensive when it comes to acquiring that grant process. The second one is based off of the solar projects that you might have heard us talk about in the tri-board meeting and in financial meetings with regards to the school, the high school being solar ready and moving forward with that process. We received this grant a long time ago. I was not sure we were going to get a grant extension with this one. This one unfortunately has changed multiple hands within town staff. So it kind of got left to the way wind until recently, we started making some good headway. Michelle Rosendez and then myself. Unfortunately, the, the timeline was very close and DOER was allowing us to extend this grant as well. September 30th is the longest we could get. That process is actually, I would say, probably in the 20% zone. Me and Greg actually had a meeting with our OPM today. We have an RFP written up and then we got to move forward with that process. So we're hoping to get that done within this timeframe.
I got one question, if I may, for you, Justin. Is there, is, were the extension dates established by the state? Or were they dates that we asked to have extended for a certain time? And the reason I ask is why the different dates?
So yeah, each department has their own different standards and their own different grant cycles. The reason that the September 30th one is, is not a big extension is because when we were awarded it, it was almost a year ago. So I wasn't even positive talking with our rep that we would even get an extension. We showed significant progress within the last month when Michelle ended up giving it over to myself. We put together a good package with our OPM, really put some, some ground to this. And I think that gained us a little leeway. I initially went out to all of the state departments that we have current grants with and asked for extensions because we were running out of time. But the DCR grant, the tree inventory grant, we, we still had some leeway. They, they were more forgiving, but I think each department has control of their own grant processes. So.
Thanks.
Anybody have any other questions for Justin? Thank you, Justin. Okay, so on the first grant, which was the grant for tree inventory projects, vote to accept that and approve it. David?
Aye.
Armand?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Justine?
Aye.
And aye. And the second is the grant for Municipal Energy and Technical Assistance Program. David?
Aye.
Armand?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Justine?
Aye.
And aye. Thank you. Fifth item on the agenda is the discussion that we started last week. And we met with the golf course and it's, it's in written, but Greg, if you want to, one fills in on that.
Yep, no problem. So Sterling Golf Management was kind enough to meet with myself and Justin DiMarco and two board liaisons as identified the last meeting. Melissa Levy, Imperial, and Chris Silva. So we had a Zoom meeting with, with their representation, both from the Maynard Golf Course and the greater organization Sterling Golf. Sterling Golf has upwards of nine, I think, golf courses that they manage. So they're, they're relatively large corporation. And just as a background, they had asked for an extension on their lease payments, which is $4,000 a month. And they, they'd asked for, for an extension on those, I think for up to three months. With the, with the assurance that they were giving us that they, that they would repay us, that they would pay us in full. So we went into the meeting with that understanding and, and a, and I believe in understanding from the board in the past board, board of select meetings that, that the board was not currently sort of allowing for, because, you know, in the perspective of the greater community and trying to be consistent with, with all of Maynard, was not allowing for, for extensions for, you know, payments and waiving of fees and whatnot. So we laid that out for Sterling. And, and I felt like it was a pretty amicable meeting, you know, very, just, it was just business. They're unsure of the revenue stream, as is any business would be. And said they were just asking for some leniency from the town. You can see that, that, you know, the, we as, as in the town, meaning both town staff and the, and the selectman liaisons were still consistent as with the messaging with the board of selectmen has been in that at this time, the board is not, is not welcoming a payment extensions. And, and so we, we also went into a little bit of the details about the utilities payment. You know, the Council on Aging is also housed within the country club of the Maynard Golf Course. And under the current agreement with Sterling Golf, the utilities payments, so meaning, you know, keeping, you know, the HVAC and, you know, like heating, cooling, whatnot. So that, that is not proportionate to the square footage of, of the, the building. It's, it's just based on rates from 2014. It was, it's, in other words, it needs to be reevaluated. So they, Sterling said they would, they would consider that disproportionate. But they were curious as to when the timing of that negotiations and basically an amendment to the contract would be, whether it had to be right away or wait until the contract was due, which is within a year. So, so in, in other words, it was, I thought it was a good positive meeting. They, in the end, they did say that they would give us the, the lease payment that was due. And then we agreed to, to pay them our portion, our responsibilities for their utility payments. Yeah, so I don't know, Justin, if you want to add, or of course, Chris or Melissa, if you want to add anything?
No, that's, that pretty much covers it, I think.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, great. It was good. I, I, in the end, I thought it was a good, good relationship, you know. We're making sure we have a good relationship with our tenants, so to speak, which is Sterling Golf.
Number six is the COVID-19 economic impact. To discuss the Economic Development Committee recommendations. Want to have that conversation? Greg, lead us in that conversation.
Yeah, sure. So the, although we do have the chair committee here, and we have Megan Sabuda, Assistant Town Administrator, who is the staff liaison to that body. But I, I do want to compliment with the opportunity to compliment the, the Economic Development Committee and, and my staff, primarily Megan, for all the work that they've been putting into. Mostly as the, as, you know, they're trying to keep up the relationship with the business community in Maynard. And that's not an easy task in these, in this day and age. So they've, it's not been easy and it's been a challenge on, on both sides and for every individual involved. But I do, I, I really appreciate all the work that everyone's put into this. Stress level is high and, and people are taking a lot of the time out of their day to devote to listening to the business communities and trying to be cooperative in, in any way we can. But, but really just to make sure that we're present for them and that's key. And that's what Jack and Megan and the rest of the EDC have been providing. But Jack was kind enough to provide a sort of a summary of what some, some recent actions and recommendations are from the Economic Development Committee to the board of selectmen. So I think it's best to come from out of Jack's mouth, if you would, Mr. Chairman.
Jack McKean, Chair of the EDC, obviously you know that. Excuse me. This is a discussion that has occupied the selectmen parts of the last couple of meetings about whether we can offer any form of relief and the form of that possible relief to the business community. The difference this week from last, well, two weeks ago, whenever it was, week ago, is that we have much crisper analysis from the Office of the Treasurer Collector that's in your package. And it basically says that this is personal property only, which really applies only to the business community. Taking Cheryl's evaluation as has been presented to you, and I see that she's on tonight. It appears that there's very little risk because we're not deferring the payments per se, and I was, we're not offering relief from the payments just from the possible penalties and a delay of a month or so. And the EDC felt that this would be a really good gesture, recognizing from the board, from the town, that we do in fact have concerns about and are supportive of the business community. So I think you have the latest and greatest data in your package. You had a chance to look at it. And it's now basically a decision of the board in terms of whether you want to offer this kind of message and support to the local business community.
Well, I for one, as a selectman, definitely would like to see us take some kind of action on this. It could be construed as a, as a minor gesture, but I think it's all about the optics. And I think it's important that, you know, we make some kind of decision and it looks good on the, on the business community in downtown area. And I don't know if you know, or if you're aware of this, talking about downtown, pretty soon we're going to be losing Middlesex Savings Bank. Probably right after that, it'll be, you know, the paper store. So you're going to start seeing some, you know, vacancies in the, especially on Nathan Street. So anything that we could do to support the businesses to keep them going, I think it'll be a good gesture on our part to, to take action.
I agree with Armand exactly. I think it's a small effort on our part. It's not going to cost us a lot. And I think it goes a long way with the businesses.
I totally agree. And to Melissa's point, it's not going to cost us anything because in the end, they're still going to be paying whatever it was they owed. So it's just, it will be a delay. And so I'm, I'm totally in support of it.
I agree. I think that, I'd also like to take a chance, take a moment to thank Cheryl for putting the numbers together. Cheryl and Mike, and because I know that with everything going on, there's a whole, there's a whole lot that they're having to figure out. So I really appreciate that they have taken the time to go back and forth and figure this out for us so we can make an informed, responsible decision. So, and I agree. I think that, you know, if it's not going to cause the town distress in general, I don't mind going forward with it either.
I'd like to add our comment as well. Cheryl, Mike, whoever's involved. We finally got a really quick turnaround and I know that Greg has expressed that to Cheryl and Mike and so forth, but good detail turned around very quickly. And we have what I would call a data-driven recommendation.
Okay.
I guess the only disappointing part is May 1st was, you know, four days ago and the bills were due. But, you know, it is what it is.
Okay, the motion that we, there is a motion to approve the deferment of the personal property tax deadline from May 1st to June 1st, 2020, and waive personal property tax late fees from June 30th, 2020.
I second that.
So you waive the payment till June 1st? And then when we waive late fees through June 30th, aren't we essentially saying we're going to wait, we're going to wait, we're going to allow the deferment till June 30th? Are you seeing that?
You can't legally say that.
Yes, yes.
That is, a couple of people have commented that it sounds kind of silly, but that is the language in the Department of Local Services Bulletin.
Presumably the, the penalties don't kick in until the 30 days has passed.
Yeah, I would presume, yeah.
That must be the presumption.
I need to check. So Cheryl, can you, can you clarify?
Either way, I support it, so it doesn't matter, but just trying to get some consistency.
I don't disagree, but it just seems like we're just, we're saying, you don't have to pay till June 1st, but there won't be any penalties to wait till the 30th either. It just doesn't, it seems like, it just seems it would be, you know, through, through council or through the, you know, those who are in Beacon Hill writing these things for communities like Maynard to take advantage of. They would tighten that up a little bit, but I, I agree. It's, it will be something to approve regardless. But it just seems, the language just seems to not make sense. That's all.
Chris, you're absolutely correct. And as I said, a couple of people have already commented on it. The motion is phrased so that we're in compliance with the Department of Local Services Bulletin. So we're putting language in place that matches the laws and the guidance that we're being given.
I absolutely understand what you're saying, Jack. It just doesn't, you know, doesn't add up, but that's okay. A lot of things don't add up these days. So anyway, does anybody else have any comments about the, this motion? Or anything within the motion or the idea behind the motion before we vote? All right, so to vote, David?
Aye.
Armand?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Justine?
Aye.
And aye as well. So we, and Greg, it does say that we have to stress to you that you expeditiously communicate this to the affected businesses.
Will do. Megan's on it, I'm sure.
I, I also want to- Jack?
Well, we'll do a press release tomorrow and we'll also include the signage relief that, you know, our office has come up with. So it will be kind of a package of how we're trying to support the businesses. We'll get that out tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, the, the expeditious bit is because May 1 was the first deadline, you know, I didn't get to word it out.
You're correct.
Add something, Mr. Chairman?
Pardon?
Can I add a point of like administration for this?
Absolutely.
So I, I do want to remind the taxpayers that although it's waived until the 30th, in, in order for the Treasurer Collector's Office to recognize that you paid it by the 30th, you should probably get it in the mail on the 29th so that state stamp appropriately. You know, like we, I, I rec, or put it in the box or, 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 you know, I think you can pay online. So make sure you get it in by the 30th, not on the 30th. The 29th is, is what I strongly recommend taxpayers to, the 29th, so that, so that you can be sure on the 30th, you're good.
Thank you.
All right. It's bureaucracy for you.
Yeah. Okay. The, the next item is the Green Meadow Elementary School Roof Replacement. And there is a motion, I'll read it and we'll discuss it. And the motion is to approve the con, approved contract with CBI Consulting LLC to conduct bidding preparation in assistance in contract administration for the construction related to the replacement of roof sections of Green Meadow Elementary School. Green Meadow Elementary School, in the amount of $62,000. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Will just walk us through exactly what this is, Greg?
Yep, so CBI Consulting was the design firm that was awarded the, the contract to do the roof and envelope study for the Green Meadow Elementary School. They did it a couple of months ago. And so the next phase of us examining the, the roof and sort of addressing the roof would be the potential replacement of it or renovations or to whatever degree needs to be done to address, to address the issues with the roof. And then so this, this proposal from CBI to do that work would be for the bidding and the contract administration. So there, again, they're the designers, so they're not the, they're not the ones, you know, they're not the contractor doing the, the actual construction. But they, they're sort of like providing the town, the administrative support to handle that, but at a cost. So it's $62,000. So that's, that's above the town administrative threshold for approval of contracts. I, we did identify that we could devote our municipal roof repair and maintenance fund. We have $89,000 in it currently. So this, this would handle that amount. And that, that particular fund is where I would also, I would also draw from for the load bearing analysis. So like the, the, the weight analysis that the school committee had recommended to be done, which, which, you know, I, I believe was $10,000. I have to double check on what the proposal was for that, but it's not, it's, it's, it's not going to break the bank on this particular fund. So yeah, that, this, this would, this contract would allow for that bidding and contract administration to take place. But obviously the logistical concerns of the actual construction still need to be hammered out. When the construction would start, how long it would last, the scope of it would, and, and, and all those questions also are reliant on the results of the town meeting articles, whether they, you know, you know, whether they succeed or not. And then additionally, if it's going to do both, both sections, the successful ballot measure following town meeting. So a lot of balls in there with this, but I think it's a good, it's a step in the right direction, you know, to address the roof.
Is the $62,000 a hard number or is there a chance that they won't spend that entire, or is it a flat contract?
I'd have to double check the contract. That's a good question. That's a good question. I mean, I, I assume that there's, you know, I don't know. I'd have to, let me get back to you and look if that's, I'd have to look.
Now, if we use the $62,000, that gives us about 20-ish thousand left for roof repairs in general.
In general, it's the municipal, or separate monies for schools. But, and I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know how much, yeah.
So great. What, what, in order for us to have this fund, was, was this fund originally earmarked for any particular roof or maintenance project, $100,000?
I don't, it's not, what's that, Justine?
Sorry, I thought that was for the, it was just, we put that in last year for, you know, all of the school roofs plus the municipal roofs to try to do whatever we could to maintain our buildings.
That's right. I don't, I don't believe it was for one particular project.
Right. I mean, so is that, was, Mike, Mr. Guzzo?
Yeah.
Is that, is that a one-year-old fund? Is that a new fund?
We did it last year. We put in $100,000 in. And the way the article was worded, it was worded for either side. You know, whether it be school roof, town roof or whatever. But we worded it such that it would include what you're doing tonight. It was worded that way.
It's just, sometimes it's hard to follow along with the.
Question.
It's hard to follow along sometimes with all the funds we have. But thank you for clarifying. Does anybody have any questions for Greg in regards to this particular article?
I have a quick question about the roof deck evaluation. That's the one that you said that we pretty much can probably cover. It's about $10,000. So are we, and you can just approve that, correct? We don't have to approve that because that's under $50,000? Got it? Okay, sorry.
Yeah, and that, that I hope to move forward as soon as possible. Because that, you know, that was the intention of the school committee and I agree. Like it will inform a lot of the, a lot of the scheduling.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anyone else? We could all vote no, just to shake Lydia up a little bit. I see she's here, so.
I think Natasha's on too, so she might get a team up.
See if they're paying attention. Anyways, so this is just, I guess, for lack of a better term, it's just the natural progression of where we are with the green metal roof. So we'll just go down the list and see who's in favor and who's not. David?
Aye.
Armand?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Justine?
Aye.
And I as well. So we're continuing to work towards repairing the roof.
Great.
All right, next up, our employee benefits line. There's, there's a motion to accept and approve the Maya Health Trust renewal proposal for the period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, as provided. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So, Greg, in lieu of NFP and Maya coming in to tell us what we're doing, it's up to you this time.
It's easy because we're doing what we did last year. So, and, and the sort of, the, the, the terms of the, of the benefits have not changed. So we, over the past, I can't remember how long we've been, we've been holding these IAC meetings, but it was before, before the current restrictions on meeting face-to-face were in place. As my four-year-old calls it, before the germs. So we were, we were doing, we were doing, we held a couple of IAC meetings, pretty, 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 you know. So it was pretty straightforward. We were just kind of laying out there, you know, where we were with, with the benefits and we were asking for some input, but it wasn't a lot of, it was a lot of urgency on behalf of the IAC. And just for the public listening, the IAC is the Insurance Advisory Committee. So it represents the employees of the town, both on the school department and the town department, unions, non-union personnel. So, so we were asking them for input and, and the benefits, but with the intention of seeing if there might be a better deal for both parties, right? And by that, I mean, you know, whether there may be some savings on the budget for the town, but, but also trying to take care of appropriately so the, the, the employees of the, of the town and the school. So a number of meetings occurred. NFP, which is the town's consultant for benefits, you know, particularly health and vision and dental benefits, was sort of the moderator of those, of those meetings and providing the, the data and the presentation. I think they're, I think they're great. I think they're in the, in the year and a half that I've been working with them now with the town of Maynard. I think they're very professional, very accommodating, very welcoming, very, and I think they, they do a good job of, of gathering the input and keeping things respectful. When we got the numbers for the rate renewal from Maya, so Maya is, is who our health insurance is provided, although we actually have a Blue Cross Blue Shield plan for the health insurance for the employees. We came back at a 3.48% or, yeah, 3.48% renewal increase over FY21. That was what Maya is proposing, which is pretty good. So we're, we're just slightly less than the, the median amongst all the different communities that have Maya. We're slightly less than the median, which I think is 3.8 of their annual increase. You know, there were some that were much lower, but there were some in the eight to 10% increase. So going into the FY21 budget planning, we, we had originally planned for, I think, a 9% increase and we brought that down to 7% when we were starting to get better enough. This is back in like Christmas time, when we were starting to get better numbers. It's, you know, sort of like a sense that we were going to be doing better, which is a reflection on, on our claims. It's a, you know, and so, and, and sort of like how the bigger pool is doing amongst the, amongst the Maya communities and whatnot. So our current budget actually has a 7%. So we kept it at 7% because we didn't know what it was going to be. I'm proposing a reduction to 4% for, for the, you know, for the budget purposes, because even though it's 3.48% renewal increase, 4% kind of allows us for that cushion in case, you know, personnel change and staffing and, and whatnot throughout the course of the year. It also kind of builds your budget slightly if you don't end up using all that 4% going into the next year because you'll have the budget for in the first place. So that, that difference between 4% and 7%, if accepted by the Selectmen, we kind, we kind of allow for some savings. I'm putting those in quotes, savings. And there's a number of options available to the board to do. One of which would be, and this was already built into the, to the budget proposal for town meeting, which is to pay off the $33,000 additional assessment that the asset application will reach from high school, you know, submitted to the town. So we have a certain obligation to pay that $33,000. Now, the rest of it, you know, there, there could have been some, there, you know, there could be some options for the board, whether to keep it within the budget, because we don't know what our budget shortfalls may be because of COVID and then, and revenue impacts and whatnot going into FY21. So if you keep it in the budget, that means you're shortfall. So less revenue that you're going to have, but you, but you actually already are budgeting for, for more. This is, I know this is kind of complicated and I'm trying to oversimplify it probably. Basically, if you give yourself more cushion in the budget, that, that might help your shortfall. But we have no idea what the shortfall may be going into FY21. But the, the plot thickened, so to speak, the other day, because, you know, the school district is, is, of course, has some own revenue streams challenges, particularly for its Excel program, which, you know, is based on tuition and whatnot. And, and they're not doing the Excel program right now. And I'm, I know I'm greatly summarizing and oversimplifying a lot of, a lot of details right now. But because of their revenue loss, you know, that, that needs to be addressed because, you know, we still have insurance, you know, benefits that we were paying out for. You know, they, I, I can't remember the exact proportion of what those, of what those teachers within the Excel program were paying. I believe it was, I don't think it was exactly a third between the town, the school and then the, and then the, the employees of Excel, but it was, it was proportionate to that. So without those employees working right now and they're not paying into those benefits, that means we don't have that, that sort of like buy-in to offset, you know, our, our budget and our, and our budget needs for, for our renewal. I know this is a lot and I, and I'm, I, I did a better job explaining in my notes on, on board docs. And Mike Guzzo is here as well. So of course he can, he can answer questions beyond me. So now, you know, the board, I'm asking the board to, to accept that renewal rate. So the renewal rate is, is 3.48%. But in addition to that, I'm asking for, you know, some, some direction or guidance or input from the board as to how you feel about the rest of the budget, you know, the, you know, handling the expenses of not having the revenue from Excel. And then the subsequent savings beyond that, which we calculated to be $80,606 and, and how the board felt about, about sort of having that money in the budget or not in the budget.
I guess my only question, Greg, about the Excel is, does that mean that will the school eventually pay the town back for that? Am I not understanding it correctly?
I don't want to speak for the schools. I don't, I don't.
I can answer it, Greg, if you want.
Go, Mike Guzzo, Finance Director, please.
Thanks, Mike.
What is, we, when we do the budget, we budget around $23,000 for each quarter. And we make a transfer from Excel into the general fund. So it basically reduces the general fund expense. But what happened with Excel right now, they're about sitting like a deficit of like $52,000. So Cheryl and I decided, rather than make that deficit larger, we would eat the $22,000 plus this year. As, you know, in other words, as an expense for health insurance. And that next year, we figured, well, the deficit isn't going to go away right away. For the first quarter of next year, we would basically, we had that credit built into it. We would basically increase, you know, what we were, you know, would reduce that saving, so to speak. So.
Okay, so basically the town, so we're, the town, we or whatever, are transferring essentially $50,000 between, between FY20 and FY21, we're transferring $50,000 back to, to pay for something that the Excel program should have paid for.
Exactly. And we probably won't go back and charge them for it. We'll just let it.
So the, so the town is not in effect, and I, I think this was the original, to simplify the original question, I think that Justine, the way I understood Justine's question, the town's not giving a gift to the schools of $30,000 or whatever the number is, that they otherwise would not have gotten. Is that true? In other words.
Well, it sounds like they have had to pay and we're not, we're telling them they don't have to now.
That's correct.
I don't know. David, it's a tough question. Like it's all perspective, I suppose. As, and I think, you know, you could, you could, you could say it a different couple of ways. They just don't have the budget and, and we have, we have to compensate it somehow in our budget. We have to accommodate in our budget. It's, gift is a strong word.
Perhaps so, but I'm, I'm just trying to, are we in effect increasing the school's budget by another $30,000?
No, it comes out, comes out of a special fund, so we're not increasing theirs.
Okay.
But this, well, we are increasing the health insurance budget to cover the deficit they were losing. So, yes.
The school's health insurance, well, it does its, the evil company cost theory, but.
Going back to the, to the original conversation about the, the health insurance costs. So while I am certainly pleased that our health insurance costs have gone down based, well, they haven't. They've gone up less than what we anticipated that they would go up.
Right.
I am still one who is strongly encouraging that we revisit the plan itself and the, the, the co-payments and the deductibles. And that's where the money is, you know, and that's where the town will think, will make benefit. And the employees, by doing so, even though they may have larger co-payments, the services that the town can provide get better. And the, the teachers get the programs perhaps that they otherwise can't get because we're spending this money on, you know, on, on health insurance costs that could be adjusted if we gave a more reasonable health insurance program in comparison to what the, the majority of us have for health insurance plans.
No, it's a point taken. So in, and so there was multiple, I actually lost count of how many different plans, you know, plan design changes were proposed. Maybe five to seven different variations of, of plan design changes were proposed to the IAC. And some were, were, we knew were, were kind of like dead in the water, so to speak. But a couple of them, we felt were, were pretty reasonable, but not for a significant change. You know, like, and, and after a couple of IAC meetings, all through Zoom, I, I really appreciate all those people kind of tuning in. Because it's not, it's not easy to kind of go through all the plan design proposals and, you know, slight changes here and there to deductibles, co-pays, high-cost hospital, you know, like there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of variations. As I'm sure you all can appreciate. So they, they were receptive, the IAC. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be careful about summarizing like 20 people on this Zoom call, but they, 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 they were, they were calm and patient and listened to all the different proposals from NFP, NFP, which was, you know, priorly vetted through myself and the HR Coordinator, Stephanie Duggan. And so, you know, one takeaway, which I'm encouraged by, is that although the IAC did not feel comfortable with moving forward with a, the plan design change at this time, they did say that we would start regularly meeting. So, so, which I think is, is, is going to be really helpful towards progress or any, any different negotiations for any different plan design. It's going to require everyone being on the same page and whether it be monthly, bi-monthly, quarterly, whichever. We need to have more regular meetings with the IAC, provide them the data of how we're doing, providing whatever claims, data, of course, protecting personal information. But, you know, kind of let them know how we're doing with our plan and that can inform when we, when it's time for these renewals again. I, they, like I said, I, I thought like the tone was. I, they, like I said, I, I thought like the tone was well received from both parties. But your point is definitely taken, uh, David, and I, and, and my, I try to iterate that, um, NFP tried to iterate that as well. And I think the employees heard, but, you know, they're, they're looking up, they're advocating for themselves and their families first. And so.
I, I, I get that. And I also, I want to clarify, I, I think in my comment just before, I, I sort of focused in on teachers and, and the plans or whatever. I, I see, you know, Chief Nobles on, on, and I think his staff, you know, the same way with the, you know, police, fire, whoever. Everybody is, is part of the team for the municipal employees. And when we can lower costs for the health insurance with minimal impact on the employee, it benefits the town as a whole. And that's sort of my point.
Yeah, right. Can you tell us, if you know the answer, what percentage of the, um, participants in the plan are, um, participants in the plan under a CBA?
I don't, don't know. I would say the majority, but I can't say if that's fifty one percent or seventy five percent, but I, I, you know, the.
Cause that's just, I mean, you know, benefits, benefits, changes to benefits plans. We saw what happened the last time we.
I've heard, I've heard it was not.
Anyway, we're not, we're not going to beat that dead horse, but it's just, it's just an interesting thing. As far as the other go, uh, does, does Maya or NFP provide a, um, a dashboard? So we have an insight, you guys have an insight as the administrators of the plan, month to month to see where, where it's at. We have, um, insight to that. I know they have it. I just don't know if we take advantage of it.
You know what? I need to double check. Um, let me look into it. Let me look into it.
I know it exists. I, you know, I, I've looked at them, um, but anyway, that's neither here nor there. I'm just curious about the CBA question, though. Does anyone else have any questions regarding the, um, renewal, the health benefits plan before we vote? Okay.
Are we also voting on the proposal as to how to spend the, uh, or how to allocate the savings?
The savings, yeah. I like the quote unquote that Greg keeps showing.
I think, I think one thing at a time, I, I, I would.
Okay, that's what I thought, that I wanted to make.
I don't see a motion to suggest how we spend the, um.
Because I didn't, I didn't want to presume, uh, how the board want to, I didn't want to pre-write a motion. I didn't want to presume anything.
Well, it's kind of, it's kind of, it's kind of funny because it's not real cash at this point.
Yep, right.
It's, it's kind of fake money, so we can't allocate fake money.
Yep.
So when you get the real money, can you make a motion? Well, I don't think we can vote on it because it's not real money. I mean, I think we can agree to have you go in a certain direction, but I don't think we have, uh, actual dollars to put to it, but.
That's why Greg kept going quote unquote in the air quotes.
Well, I think Greg's quotes were about savings in reality.
So for, for now, to David's point, we're just going to vote to approve the renewal of the health plan. Has nothing to do with any potential savings, um, school shortfalls or anything else, just the plan itself.
Okay.
All right. So David.
Hi.
Armin?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Justine?
Hi.
And I as well. So do we want to just, Greg, do we just want to, um, wait until you have a motion in regards to those things or how we want to handle those things or no?
So I mean, it could, because it could be, I could have a couple of different motions. Let me, let me just sort of summarize. Again, one, it, it could either be, it could either be reduce the budget. So we, so we have an FY twenty one budget proposal. And it has a certain amount of, of, of funding to be appropriated for health benefits. It says benefits, but you know, we're talking about health benefits in particular here. So you, we don't, as it turns out, we don't need the full, you know, we had seven percent of budgeted for. We don't need the full seven percent. Okay. It's not much less that we need, but it's about eighty thousand dollars less than, than what we budgeted for. So what do you do with that eighty thousand dollars? Do you keep it in the budget, um, which I'm proposing right now because I don't know what my shortfall is going to be and I, and, and frankly, you know, like, I like the idea of having a little bit of cushion into the budget going into the new fiscal year, which would be considered, you know, for a supplemental budget change, uh, for a fall town meeting. So it's not, it's not to say we're just going to keep that in there. It's to say that, you know, in a couple more weeks, really, because it'll be on us pretty quick. In a couple more weeks, we'll, we'll know what the shortfall may be and we'll have, we'll have, um, recommendations for budget adjustments going into the fall. Or do you reduce your budget by eighty thousand dollars? Meaning, you know, come tax recap time, that's eighty thousand dollars less that you're, that you're asking to, to collect. Is eighty thousand dollars a lot in the scheme of things? No. Is it, you know, is it, is it going to be much relief to taxpayers? No, it's not. But is it? It's eighty thousand dollars. So I, 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 I recommend keeping it in, um, in the line item and then we're, and we're, you know, and we'll consider it, um, later. I, I, again, I'm, I'm oversimplifying it. Yeah. So I don't know how, I don't know how the board feels. That's what I'm trying to say. I, I, again, you could do nothing. That's an option. And, and by nothing, it just means you go with my proposal, which is keep it in the line item and then come the fall, we, we, we evaluate. Mike, Mike, Mike Guzzo, the finance director, am I, am I, am I, uh, putting my foot in my mouth at all, or is that pretty right?
No, no, no. I think the original recommendation that we had discussed with Greg and Cheryl and I was that we would just leave the budget the way it is and then come the fall. We know we're going to be adjusting the budget because of local aid and everything and just do it all at one time. And then, and that eighty thousand would be used to offset any cuts that we would have to make. So, I mean, that would be my recommendation at this time versus doing anything now, because we know we're going to make cuts next year in October. So.
But that doesn't require any type of action by us. You would leave, you would leave it. So at this point, would it be left in the, um, the, lack of a better phrase, benefits line item?
Yes. Yes. I mean, what would happen in the fall? Let's, you know, getting about how much, you know, how much was short, you know, in, in local receipts. If we had everything being equal, if we had, you know, if there was no COVID nineteen, we would have gone into, you know, we would have reduced the budget, you know, in the fall and reallocated it or however we're going to do it. My recommendation is to wait and, you know, hopefully we'll have an answer for, you know, what it might look like for next for the fall. And just put all the pieces together for the board and say, hey, these are all the pieces. What do you want to do? And then you would can make recommendations, you know, A, B, C, and D, or whatever. That would be my recommendation.
Yeah. And I, I think, I think that, I think that makes sense. The, uh, going back to Greg's comment about, you know, is eighty thousand dollars a lot of money in the grand scheme for the taxpayer? Uh, no, it's not. Uh, and I agree with that comment. However, when we have year after year, where if there are savings of eighty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars, and you add them all up over the course of time, then yes, you are talking about significant money. So we'll keep this in mind when we have, just because you happen to have, uh, you know, and I'll use this phrase, a give back from the health insurance or whatever it happens to be, you know, something else comes in under budget. Doesn't always necessarily mean we keep it in the budget and continue to, to burden the taxpayer with money that really, at that point, isn't necessary for the budget. And I'm, I'm not being negative about that. I'm just saying that, you know, a little, a, a little cut here and a cut there leads to some heavy bleeding after a while.
Yeah. The thing is, if we were to wait in the fall and we had to for the October town meeting, we, if we, you know, cut, say, the budget by eighty thousand, it would affect the tax recap. It would be affected on that. So we do have time.
Yeah, I, I, I get that. I'm, I'm, I'm making sort of a grander point, uh, you know, for a bigger picture.
Yeah. I mean, in the past, what we've done is we've always used it instead of just letting it go.
I think the, uh, I think the fall special is going to come a lot sooner than we think, based on all that's going on in our world, but I don't think that eighty thousand is going to be anywhere for too long.
Yeah.
It's just going to be, it's going to be upon us and it's just with the way things down, the way things down in the world, it's just changing too quick. So.
Yep.
I think the fall special will be earlier than usual. But that's a whole other story.
Yeah, I mean, I'm making meetings today at work for, for August and we're not even sure if we're going to be able to hold the meeting. That's the type of world we're living in.
All right. So I, no, I appreciate it. If there's, if there's no objections from the board, I, I think this is fine. Like, that's all I needed to hear really is, is if, if anyone felt strongly one way or the other, that's what I needed to hear. So I appreciate it, Mr. Chair.
All right. So that's okay. No problem. Um, so the review of the warrants is where we're at. You want to lead us to the review of the warrant, Greg?
Yes. So this is still kind of a work in progress and, and for a couple of different reasons. Right off the bat, the cover page, you know, we had to have some back and forth with the finance committee and legal. And I, and I don't think the version you have in front of you is just the final version, because what we're trying to figure out is the logistics of, of holding, uh, public hearings for the finance, you know, per charter, um, the finance committee has to have public hearings for review of the warrant and budget. So how to hold those meetings is, is tricky in this, in these circumstances. So we're, we're trying to make sure we hammer out how to do it. Right now, the, the plan is, um, if we're allowed to hold them via Zoom. Um, however, we are trying to set up, um, potentially, you know, the Fowler auditorium, uh, to, which, which could actually be a good rehearsal going into town meeting, also at the auditorium. So kind of up in there, but I, the point I was trying to make is that, is that the, the articles themselves should be nearly complete. We need to do another, um, proofreading, um, and we need to make sure that the comments are what they have, or what they should be. Also, the finance committee has to provide their comments. At the last finance committee meeting, they, they divvied up, uh, they sort of test out all the different finance committee members, to, to write in the comments and they'll get those, they'll get those back to our office and Becky Mosca will compile those into the, into the, um, version. Now, um, another, another significant change since the last time the board saw it was, um, the order of the articles. So Dick Downey, the town moderator, obviously he has a lot of, um, authority over, over the articles. And so we reached out to him and asked him what, in what order he thought they could go in and the, um, consent agendas and whatnot. So, so he provided that input and you can see it here. Yeah. And I, so I, I kind of wanted to just give an update to that. I think the biggest, I, I think the, the biggest report or the biggest item of, of my report for this item would be that we're, the logistics, logistics are up in the air and we don't know, we don't know what the, what the, we don't know what we're going to be able to do or when. So if the governor relaxes some of the restrictions on public meetings, particularly the, the, you know, no more than ten people in, in one single space. That's good because then we could move forward with, with, um, uh, these public hearings and then eventually the town meeting. But if that's, if that's not the same timeline or, or whatever the timeline may be, that's going to get tricky. So, um, it's a bigger conversation, but we're, we're, we're working through it, um, with, uh, with Justin DiMarco, uh, and DBW director and Kyle Brainerd, the head custodian. And in, obviously in consultation with, um, Kenneth Rook, the chair of the finance committee.
I actually have a question about the town meeting itself. Um, if, so I, I read, I think it was last week, um, Dick Downey's, um, information about his, how he felt that the room should be set up. So six feet apart, the rows are twelve feet apart, whatever. So, you know, you've got, and I think we're going to use maybe two or three spaces if we have to. My one concern is because we do have a dead exclude, it's not a big exclusion, but it is a dead exclusion. Because we have a dead exclusion on this warrant. If for some reason all of those seats fill up, because that's not a lot of seats in general, if you're six feet apart, twelve.
Right, right.
So if people cannot access the meeting because there isn't room for them to sit down and there isn't room for them to social distance, what happens then? Because then it's, then we're not allowing people to attend a public meeting.
That's a good question. I'm going to have to look into it unless Dick Downey's on the phone and he knows I, I need to look. I've never been in that circumstances, so I'd have to, I'd have to find out for sure.
I was just curious if that was a thing. I wasn't, I just want to make sure that we don't go through something here. If people can't attend it because of space things that they're, that we're going to have to close the meeting or something.
My understanding was that he was also planning on potentially using the, um, the gymnasium in Fowler as well as the lot, the cafeteria in Fowler as overflow with, you know, uh, cameras available through whatever you call it, uh, closed circuit television or whatever. As we have when it's been very, very crowded meetings versus spread out meetings. My suspicion is that, um, if we used all of those spaces and use the six foot, I don't think we would have, uh, an overcrowding problem.
Well, I guess the question is, I guess, how many people fit in all?
I can give you, I can give you like our, our first, so just, this is all very coincidental that, that I, I stayed up kind of late last night trying to, trying to already get through these procedures in my head. But, um, I, I'm not, don't hold me to these numbers, but, but initial numbers showing the six foot, six foot dispersion with the, with the rows and whatnot. And we came out to about forty or fifty seats within the auditorium. It's, so it's not that much. So you, so then we are reliant on the spillover into, uh, the gymnasium and the cafeteria. And so, uh, but each of those is, you know, one, one, Kyle, Kyle Brainerd and Justin Marco, uh, they, they've been scheming the, this floor layout and whatnot. All, all being said, we might be able to get about a hundred and fifty people into the three spaces combined.
That's, that is, that is, that is, uh.
Not a lot.
It's not a lot.
Not enough.
Greg, can I say something? Just, uh, the, it's, it's been brought up.
Introduce yourself, chief.
Uh, Mike Noble, police chief. Uh, it's been brought up. What about, because everybody's doing the, the spacing by one person. There's going to be a lot of like husband and wife that don't need to social distance. So they're going to be in two seats next to each other and then they'll be six feet apart from somebody else, six feet apart, because most people show up that they're, uh, as couples, not just as, uh, a single person. So you will be able to fit more in a building.
Potentially.
Yeah.
Can I also comment?
Yes, you may.
Um, so I believe that in the past, when we've had overflow in the gym.
Lydia, who are you? Who are you?
Lydia Clancy, Maynard School Committee. In the past, when we've had overflow in the gym or the cafeteria, I believe WAVM has been in charge of setting up the cameras and recording equipment. So I would pass it by them because as far as I know, they don't have access to their equipment right now because of the closure and the high school, um, being locked. I don't know that anyone has entrance, um, permission. So that might be something just to take into consideration.
And we have, and thank you for bringing that up. And.
Okay, sorry.
No, no, it's, I think it's, I think you're right to. There's a lot of logistics about all, all this and, and we definitely need to kind of go through the checkbox of, of who needs to know what and what, who needs to be involved. You're totally right, though. But yes, the, the schools are not open to the public, but if it's, I would, I feel that if it was a certain controlled access, you know, by WAVM or, or Mark Managen or whoever, we're not, we're not opening the, the schools, so to speak. We're, we're allowing for just controlled access to get their equipment. But again, this is all in a couple of weeks, we, we'll kind of know where we are with the, you know, with the data thing.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, this is Ken Estebank Finance Committee. I got a quick question.
Okay.
So, uh, I just wanted to confirm, Greg, that, uh, the two articles pertaining to the change of the board of selectmen name, uh, whether they're going to be on the June, uh, town meeting, uh, warrant or deferred to, uh, to October, because they're not on the current warrant that, that you have before the board of selectmen. So I just, I, I want to make sure that, uh, when we're providing the, uh, recommendations, we're doing the right, the, the right ones.
Right. So that was, thank you for bringing that up, uh, Ken. So you're right. That was, that was, uh, uh, an error on our part.
Yeah.
That, those should be included. So those, the, the board did, you know, per the minutes you can see from the last meeting, the board did approve those, you know, um, those two articles. I can't explain why they weren't included. It's, it doesn't really matter, but they, but those, those, those are also. What, what Ken is referring to is the, um, petition for the special legislation to allow for the name change in the charter. Uh, I'm sorry, for the bylaws and the zoning bylaws, um, uh, just to change the name from the board of selectmen to the select board. Thanks. To be included. I, again, I, I don't know how those weren't, but they, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else any questions about, um, the warrant or logistics planning? All right. Um, next up is the item ten, uh, financial conditions due to COVID nineteen.
So. So, Mr. Chairman, if you will, the if I recall, the the board had asked that this be like an ongoing topic on the agenda, which is is totally, I I agree with. As far as the update for this week, I am encouraged by, you know, so the coincidence that we already had going into this season was that we had an agreement with through the Community Compact, which is Governor's Office Grant Program to partner with the Collins Center out of UMass Boston to have their their team work with our finances team and the Finance Committee and the Budget Subcommittee and the Board of Selectmen and the community stakeholders to do forecasting and financial policy development. And and I feel really lucky compared to a lot of the towns that didn't already have this in place, who would love to get the, you know, like a professional teams worth from UMass Boston to do work that everyone's going to be after doing anyways. I, coincidentally as well, I was on the call today with the Small Town Administrators Association, which is an MMA Association. And Sean Cronin, who's the Director of Local Service, I actually, I'm not sure of his title is, but he's in charge of the Division of Local Services within DUR, which is basically city and town finances within Department of Revenue. And everyone was talking about forecasting and and how you're going to, you know, like how how you can kind of monitor your expenses and what you may be able to do as far as projections for revenue and how to deal with with shortfalls and whatnot. So, you know, all all these small towns are doing it on their own, whereas we're we're going to have, I believe, a crucial benefit of of having the Collins Center help us out with that. And we've been very straightforward with them that that, you know, our town staff is under a lot of stress. And by town staff, I'm, there's a handful of of finance team for the town. And so having them to supplement the the town staff work is is going to be, I'm I'm excited about it. I'm enthusiastic. So I will be informing the board as those projects develop and I will be asking for input, whether it be through meetings or just through correspondence as those projects develop. So whether it be forecasting or financial policies, in particular, you know, in the last couple of, you know, we've been calling them tri-board meetings or I've been calling them joint budget review, you know, that kind of aligns with the charter description. But, you know, as we're having the Finance Committee, Boards and the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee get together and then we've been hearing the forecasting models presented by Bob McCarthy. This is all, this is all in line with that. So we'll kind of be, I know I've said this a couple of board meetings, but this will be a way of of documenting that, ducking those those conversations, which I think will inform us going into the future. This, there's going to be a new norm. And so we'll have, we'll have policies in place to address that new norm. And so I'm I'm excited. Otherwise, you know, we'll need to wait until tax bills start coming in in a couple of weeks and then we'll know where we are with revenue, which will then inform our conversations going into June and July, developing that supplemental budget into the articles for Fall Town Meeting. And so I I expect we'll have bunch of subcommittee meetings. I suspect we'll have, and I know the board has indicated to schedule a a another tri-board meeting or the joint budget review meetings. But we need, we need data to to deliberate on and that I won't have for another couple of weeks.
Mike or Cheryl, perhaps you can answer this question. When do we typically see the, like, for example, meals tax? When would, when would that be submitted to us? Is that done monthly? Is that done quarterly? Is that done annually? When will we actually be able to start seeing a trend relative to specifically, you know, something outside of any taxation outside of the normal property tax or any revenue outside of the normal property tax? When will we be able to see that trend?
All right. Cheryl, you want me to answer it? On the meals tax, we've already gotten three quarters, it's done quarterly. And we've gotten through the last quarter, 84,000. I don't assume we'll get any, you know, I wouldn't be projecting. So when I look, I started looking at projections with, you know, these local receipts and other stuff. You know, I'll be able to come up with a number probably shortly and we're looking at.
Do you know what we had got last year in the same quarter?
Yes, we're about 7,000 ahead of last, what we did last year at the same point in time.
So we're actually doing better on on that?
Right. But that being said, 100,000.
So scrap all our concerns, we're doing great.
No, I didn't say that.
So Dave, we haven't had any results yet from, sorry, this is Cheryl Kane, Trivia Collector. We haven't seen any results yet from the lack of meals tax. That'll be the last quarter, take away June, we won't know till the end of June for that.
Okay, that was, that was my question.
We're seeing the interest right now. That's our other concern, you know, is that we're not going to be pulling any much interest. And actually, right now, for this month, it doesn't look terrible. So maybe we'll do better than we thought there. I don't know.
Thank you.
Any else on the financial conditions, Greg? Anybody else have any comments?
So Greg, I have a question about that because you did mention in your PTA report about the tri-board meeting, trying to schedule. So you think this report will be available for or one of our meetings, depending when we're scheduling it for, or you don't know?
Let me, let me, let me look at the, they had a timeline in, they had a proposed timeline, which I don't think we were going to be able to stick to because that timeline was before the germs. So it doesn't look, it looks like maybe July will have like a draft of the forecast. It's easier to do the financial policies to a degree because it's because it's, it's not tied to specific numbers. It's just like the approach to it, the procedures and whatnot.
That would be good to have that report when we meet it, when we have the tri-board meeting.
I 100% agree. I I think either way, I'm glad that that, you know, Bob McCarthy and the rest of the Finance Committee has already done a lot of work. Working with the town staff, you know, to to in that, in that direction, like of having forecasting and something, you know, something we can all look at and talk about together. And this would, this would only been, this would only supplement that, which I think is would be ideal to your point.
Right.
I'm I'm looking at it now, it looks, and it says, deliver and present final forecast is August.
Oh.
And I don't know if we're gonna, I think this is all going to be delayed a little bit after that, just because we won't have, you know, like it's with the amount of manpower, frankly, that we have in the offices and the amount of workload that that the town staff, you know, Cheryl Kane, Mike, Mike Guzzo are doing. The timing is not good for this whole COVID thing, particularly because we're going into a new fiscal year. And so not only do we have town meeting and whatnot, but they also have a lot of administrative work and procedural work just to, just to change the budget, you know.
Understood, I mean, absolutely. I'm just, I'm just saying that that's a good, you know, good report to have for.
Yeah.
Just, you know.
So the timing isn't good for COVID, Greg. Now, what, when was the good time for COVID?
I don't know.
A good question.
Good question, good question. I get, you know, in the dead of winter, because then we wouldn't.
There you go.
I don't know.
So I feel about the town administrators report. Oh, it's the next agenda item.
Hey, hey. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me, if you give me a half a second, let me pull it up.
Yeah, no, it's, I mean, it's all right there. It's, you know.
So I, so I, there was a couple of updates. This one, this one's pretty quick and easy and then, but we do have the Police Chief on the line. So I don't want to, I don't want to spend too long and we'll get to him quickly. But so the the Massachusetts School Building Authority has been in communication with the town and both the Town Department and this and the School Department, School Committee and whatnot. As we kind of move forward with planning the proposed renovations, restructuring or otherwise of the Green Meadow Elementary School. As we're going into the eligibility period for that, for those planning with the MSBA, one of the first steps is the submission of an initial compliance certificate. And that does require the Chief Executive Officer, as well as the School Committee's approval. But I am not the Chief Executive Officer, I'm the Chief Administrative Officer. So I, so I am, I it, I think it is appropriate to get the board's approval of this initial compliance certificate that I provided. If you have any questions, absolutely feel free to ask and then, but it's, it seems like it's just the first step in a longer, lengthier process. And frankly, it's highly reliant on the School Department to provide a lot of the data and to do the legwork for this. But the town is in support, of course, and and will provide whatever, whatever we can to help them through this process, we'll do it together. But but so I, so I'm asking if the board would 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 do the motion I'm recommending and to approve the initial compliance certificate.
By doing so, is there any commitment to money?
No, I don't believe so, because the commitment to money, which does exist, you know, the MSBA does require a commitment. That would be through the funding of the feasibility study. And that's, that's, you know, to be proposed for the fall.
Is, I just had a quick question about, it looks like a lot of this, I read through most of it. But on a lot of it is obviously that the district is certifying something or the district advises or whatnot. So we are just, we're putting our names on it, but we are confident that the district has done everything in this article.
I am, are you asking? I am confident they have a good team at the district who who are, are looking at all of these items. I also, the School Committee has also been highly involved.
The interesting part was we only have to sign it once, one person, they have to sign two people.
Wow.
So they have to, they have to agree with twice, we don't have to agree with once. But yeah, it's, it's the Superintendent and the Chair of the School Committee both have to agree to the district will do the things that are within. We, you know, we disagree as a board. I will, I will make the motion that Greg asked for, that the, make a motion to accept and approve the initial compliance certification certification as presented. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I mean, I don't know, I think, I mean, Lydia is here still and Natasha is here, so I'm sure that the school is all in on this as well. Do you want to comment at all, Lydia or Natasha?
Sure. Um, yes, I know that Jen and Mary Jane, Jen Goudat and Mary Jane, Lydia Clancy's School Committee, sorry, Maynard School Committee, have been working really hard to fulfill all the obligations for this initial step prior to being accepted into the feasibility study. And although I haven't reviewed all the documents, I have every confidence that they've done the work that needed to be done. We're taking it very seriously and we feel very strongly that at the very least, we need to do what it takes in order to get accepted into the feasibility study and hopefully proceed with the feasibility study.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or concerns? All right, is see in favor, David?
Hi. Hi.
Melissa? Christine?
Hi.
Yeah, as well. Okay, so there's that. And I guess Mike is here, Mike here to speak about the Special Order 22 and 20 dash 3.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, just as for the public, you know, if the public didn't know or isn't aware, so the the Governor's Office did release another order with, which was that you you just referenced, Mr. Chairman. It, a couple of different things just came down from the Governor's Office just a couple of days ago. One is that he did in fact extend the closure of of non-essential services and and whatnot in the state office, which were following as well until May 18th. But he did establish reopening Advisory Board that's supposed to inform the state's procedures into reopening the state. But he also, he also ordered mandatory face and, you know, mask and face coverings starting tomorrow if you're not able to abide by proper social distancing. And so the, but he left the enforcement of that up to municipalities. And so Chief Noble, the Police Chief, has been in conversations with Kelly Paloxnick, the.
Paulitonic.
Bah, get it wrong every time, sorry, Kelly. So Paulitonic. And and so I, I really appreciate their quick turnaround because as soon as they heard about this, they got together. And so, yeah, I I'll leave Chief to describe the the sort of, and I agree to this, the town's approach to this order.
Yeah, when the, when the came out, I I had been in contact with Kelly and we were on the same page that we didn't think Maynard needed a mandatory at first because we don't have a large supermarket. We don't have a beach, we don't have somewhere where everybody would gather on a usual basis. But when the Governor's Order came down, that changed that. So we had to impose some kind of restrictions or you'll have to follow the policy that he set out. Kelly was on the same page as us, as, you know, information and voluntary compliance is going to be our primary goal of of this. That, you know, just from talking to people, just from reading, you know, whatever about the town and stuff. Some people have no issue with it at all and some people are dead set against it. You know, it's a small group or whatever. So enforcement of it has always been an issue and it's something I've thought about for a while. Inside stores, inside anything, that's easy, you know, that's a building this. It's the people walking, you know, going for a walk, they're not wearing it. And then they walk by somebody and somebody complains and calls us that. So that's, that's where we're, we're going to have to, you know, educate people to the point that, you know, if they can't social distance, then they they're going to have to wear something. There will be people that will probably try to test us and I made sure that the supervisors and the officers know that, you know, if this happens, you got to stay calm, you got to do this, you know, people, it's a high stress period for some of the people. So we put the two orders in place. One, obviously for the officers themselves, you know, when they go on a call, they have to wear masks when they, whenever, basically, they get out of the cruiser. They don't have to wear them, obviously, driving around in the cruiser, but whenever they get out of the cruiser to do anything that would involve interacting with the public, they have to wear a mask themselves. So that's where, that's where we stand, myself and Kelly, we're both on the same page. The authority of all of this falls under the Board of Health. It doesn't fall under the Police Department. But we can be an arm of the Board of Health in the enforcement of it. And that's what almost all communities do because the Board of Health is just not enough resources that they have to go out and basically police it. So they, she will use us, but I've required a report for each incidence that it comes to the point where we have to remove somebody or give them a citation. Citation is the last thing we want to do, but it'll be one of those where if the person just doesn't comply after strenuous, you know, trying to get him, you know, if they strenuously subject, so to speak.
So so Chief, what is the citation?
Three, $300.
Okay.
It falls under, it falls under, we already have that civil citation book and you would just put it under the same, a Board of Health civil citation, you know, of $300.
Does that money go to the town or is that state?
I believe it goes to the town, all of those go to the town. All the simple citation books that we write, all civil citations go to the town.
Well, let's hope you don't have to use it.
Yeah, it's not something that.
The FinCom hardly approves.
You were gonna say that.
I thought you were gonna say the FinCom encourages lots of citations.
Heavens, no. I'm sure only legitimate citations would be, but having seen some of the clowns that are out there, I I applaud your efforts to get, get the officers prepared. So thank you, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a tough subject because it's not, it's not going to be, yeah, criminal doing it. That's that the hot pot they'll have, they have to understand, it's not going to be somebody like that.
Well, there, you know, they had a, you know, an incident today, you've probably seen it online where some woman in a Dollar General store in Michigan told somebody to get a mask on and he came up and wiped his nose on her shirt and got, you know, got an assault arrest out of it.
Yeah, I I mean, in that, those type of cases, absolutely. But I I, I think our communities a little, usually a little, it's going to be better.
More cooperative, yeah.
There was apparently, very tragically, obviously, a murder as a result of a shop owner.
That's what I thought you were going to say.
A shop owner that said, wear a mask. And the other guy said, no, I won't, boom, done.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I think to Chief's point that.
And I, you know, I think to chief's point, I think it's gonna be um uh one of those balancing things when you try to enforce something like this, it's gonna be uh.
Well, what, one of the things too is we have, you know, we've been, you know, uh people at town and community have been overly generous giving us masks.
Yeah.
Um and we haven't had to use it even close because the ones we have can be reused, the the.
That's a good point, huh?
N ninety-fives and a K and ninety-five can be reused by us, so we have a whole host of ones that have been donated that we. Uh the offices will give to those people that aren't complying, so they can comply.
Very nice.
I have a question, is it possible, I don't know if there's anyone from the Board of Health here, to do random checks on restaurants in town that are handling food and make sure that they're complying? Because there's been a few reports of a couple, I think most go above and beyond. I mean, I went to Pleasant Cafe tonight and they come out with masks and gloves and open your trunk and put food in, but I think there's a few that aren't complying and once the order goes into effect, I just want to make sure anyone who's. Food handling is complying with the order because I think there's a lot of concern in the community about that.
I don't think Kelly, Kelly is, okay, go ahead.
Oh, just, this is Megan Zamuto, Assistant Town Administrator, so our food agent, Beth Grossman, has been. You know, working with all the restaurants, we've sent, you know, several pieces of correspondence to all the restaurants in town. Um I'm not sure if she's doing random, random checks for that specific purpose, but I'll follow up with her and, you know, let the board know, of course. Um, you know, what specific um procedures are in place to make sure everyone's complying. Okay, awesome.
When I talked to Kelly Polatonic, uh I, we said we would go with them, but that is not gonna be our.
Yeah.
Uh our our thing, we will go with them just to make sure that, you know, it wasn't an issue, you know, uh but uh they would, they would do those type of.
Right.
This is it, but I'm sure we'll get calls if the people in there aren't wearing also, and then we'll go down, we'll answer the complaints, basically.
Chief, just just curious, is it, is it your interpretation that the governor's order um for somebody who's out walking, just out for a, I like to walk. Um twice a day, uh so if somebody's out walking that, based on the governor's order, you should have a mask on?
Not in Maynard, no, uh because you can walk by somebody and give six feet away. The problem is is it's a one-size-fits-all order and it it encompasses Boston and encompasses those cities where people are walking. You know, with ten people on each sidewalk and they're constantly walking by here, yeah. You know, there there are people out walking, yes, but it's not, you know, uh a business, business district type of, you know, area where they can walk by each other without. You know, uh being right next to each other.
Well, it's not densely populated like.
Exactly, yeah, exactly, so I I don't think, yeah, but I I am prepared that we will get those type of calls.
I'm sure you will.
You know, um and it it like I said, it's hard to enforce because, you know, who am I to say that they didn't walk six feet apart from somebody? You know, because we're never gonna be there right when they walk by, we're gonna get, hey, they're.
You're gonna have to carry a measuring tape with you.
Yeah, uh and and the irony is is for us to enforce that, we have to break social uh distance.
That's a good point, that.
That is re- the reality of it, you know.
The governor's order does not specify six feet, it specifies approximately six feet. So you wouldn't even have a a measuring tape for that, like Chief Noble says, you know, it it generally is is intended to suggest that if you can keep. Uh six feet apart, you don't have to have a mask, but if you can't keep generally uh approximately six feet apart, you're supposed to have one. And it does specify that when you're in grocery stores, retail.
Inside, inside is easy.
Taxis, et cetera, et cetera, that you have to have them on.
Yeah.
Uh the presumption being, I, the other thing that I noticed that some towns are doing. Is that they're encouraging retail stores and obviously larger ones, I I guess probably more often, to have sort of one-way arrows on their aisles. Um, most of our stores are not that big, but uh, you know, I thought that was interesting, too.
Well, some towns, some towns have one sidewalk one way and the other sidewalk the other way, so be surprised what towns are doing, too.
Yeah, well, they got them, they have them in, they have them at the Market Basket in Hudson.
Oh, yeah.
Well, they have, they have arrows and they have a requirement for masks.
They have them in Shaws, they have them in. Stop and shop. Yeah. Shopping is very stressful. And I'm in violation all the time because I forget. You go the wrong way. Yes, and then I back up, I start, I realize it, and I.
One of the things I have the officers doing uh tomorrow was going to the local convenience stores and dropping off some of the masks so they can have them right at the front.
That's a good idea.
So if somebody genuinely like, oh, I forgot, we have to have them and doesn't have something or whatever, they can grab, you know.
Can I have a question?
Go ahead, go ahead, Natasha.
Hi, Natasha Rivera, um it's not school related, but um kids, I know that I've heard a lot of um parents asking about masks for children. And I don't know, uh I know that there's kids who go out and will play potentially together, I don't know if the officers will be able to, if the masks are. Fitting or how that will be handled, um because I that that seems to be one of the issues, sometimes our kids go out and play with their friends. Even though they're they're not quite social distancing and I just kind of perceive that being one of the issues that your officers might run across where some kids are on bikes or.
Again, that they they if they do go out to that, they they're gonna talk to them like and educate them uh as much as they can. It's hot for kids, I I took my son out to Ray and Sons, to my ten-year-old to get his bike, and we were there maybe fifteen minutes and he had so much trouble keeping his. You know, the the thing on and he goes, ah, dad, it's hot, I can't breathe.
It's hot, right now, it's tough for kids.
And a kid wants to put his hands on his face all the time and he was, and he's ten, you know.
Right.
I'm thinking, you know, you're six and seven, you know, year olds who are more fidgety, too, you know, it's 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 gonna be tough for some uh people, but again, like I said, it's a. You know, um voluntary compliance and trying to educate, you know, and and be in this, we're not gonna go out and be uh as some have put it, the masked police, you know.
Thank you for all that you are needing to do with this, I know it's not gonna be anything you look forward to, so just wanna, just thanks again for. Great department there.
Yeah, and and also for continuing to offer that pickup and delivery service to the seniors and a high-risk of residents, I think that's really, how how much of that have you seen, I mean, have you done?
We've done like here and there, uh I think because the restaurants all started in, you know, doing delivery that didn't do delivery, that's the. Um, so, you know, all the stores, all the um grocery stores who started deliveries that, we haven't done it as much as I thought we would. But we've done it, you know, it's lasted uh longer than I thought, because when I first put that in place, I said, this isn't for the next couple of weeks because everybody's stocking up, it's for. When it, when it really starts hitting this, this, you know, so we do it, you know, somewhat regularly, but not not even close to what I thought we would be.
I thought your uh your statistics in the um that you've supplied to Greg um were really kind of interesting uh relative to the the. The reduction in calls, um if I recall, it was like a good, yes. None of them were down, o- other than citations, which now is the time to speed, I guess, to Maynard, but uh. Other than citations, they weren't down as much as I would have expected, but um they they were all down significantly, but not, man.
It 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 we, we had that one, one uh accident that cost like a a lot of it to be done, like it was the act, it was the, it was uh. An OUI, a drunk driver took out the stone pillars at the uh island at Nathan and Main.
Oh, I didn't even know that.
That one accident turned into an accident, an arrest, two citations because of all the charges that were there, so. It it, you know, that one kind of skewed it by one incident, you know, but yeah, the accidents, it, I mean, everything's down significantly, you know. Uh call, a call volume is down significantly, but it's not down uh as much, but yeah, the arrests, people just aren't, you know.
By the way, um Sunday afternoon was probably around eleven o'clock in the morning, so Sunday morning. Driving down Nathan Street, there's no cars parked on either side of Nathan Street, you know, and I don't travel fast, but I had stopped at the light up at the um the intersection. And I proceed and a a car decided that it was now a two-lane roadway and passed me on the left.
I, well, I I will say, I will say this, you know, even because because we're not stopping guys, but because there's not as many cars on the road. That people think of, we can go a little faster, we can do this, but because there's not the, somebody pulling out, somebody doing this, there's not as many accidents as none as this, but yeah.
There was statistics this morning that the fatalities are up um in in Massachusetts during this period of time because of speed. Speed and inattention.
It it and and, yeah, because you don't have.
Mostly single-vehicle accidents.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, for the, you report?
Uh, I mean, there's a lot in the report and I appreciate the staff and everything that they they provide as input, I, it is very informative and um. They do, they do a good amount of work putting into, so as always, I encourage the public to read the report. Um, there's a couple of helpful links in there and whatnot, and then. Um and always go to the town's website and check and make sure that the public is going to that COVID nineteen informational portal page that Megan set up. Um, it's very, she updates it, I think regularly, or maybe every day, and and so um go to it if you're curious about the town sort of relationship and communications i- in in COVID nineteen.
You know, for sure.
Yeah, so I got a couple of uh questions in regards to the administrator report, so going back to the tri-board meeting, are we proposing a date that was just, that was just something you threw out there, Greg, for now?
So I I do, I am proposing two dates, um because I'm trying to get something on the books, so um uh July fourteenth or July twenty-eighth. But it, but there's a lot of obviously logistical concerns to either of those dates. But but if 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 you on the board tell me right now that you're not available for either of those, we'll come up with something else. Okay, so so.
You said July twenty-fourth?
No, fourteen.
Fourteenth and twenty-eight.
Fourteenth and twenty-eighth.
It just helps, you know, to to get a date on the book somewhere and then, yeah.
And then the other thing with Green Star, yeah, the the scheduled public hearing, is that gonna be done virtually or how is that gonna?
That is a great question, so um I would prefer not, I don't, I I prefer not to have public hearings done virtually if if I can help it. Uh but that, then, you know, that now we're going back to the logistical concerns of holding something probably at the Fowler School, but I.
Are they pushing for that right now, public hearing?
Hey, Green Star, I'm sure Green Star would love to get this.
Of course.
Uh so I have, I have not been in the, I'm not the one in direct contact with Green Star, uh Becky Moskett and Megan have been, so um. I don't know, maybe.
Yeah, I can speak to that, Megan Zamuto, Assistant Town Administrator, um once they submit the application, we are on the clock for a certain period of time.
Okay.
See it, so um, you know, we we don't have the luxury of of pushing it to July, I think June is kind of the longest we can do it. Um and, you know, as Greg mentioned, the governor's emergency order for open meeting law is till the end of the um. The, you know, the emergency order here, so what it's gonna look like after that, you know, if there's gonna be some flexibility with virtual meetings or kind of a hybrid. Um is yet to be seen, so we're we're preparing for an in-person meeting, but, you know, we'll have to be flexible, I think.
What are they, what are they planning to um file?
So they've submitted their application, we're reviewing it, um and it's early June uh that we have it scheduled for, I believe. I don't, I think, I think that I can, I can confirm it and send it down.
How much time do we have, thirty days from the time they file?
It's thirty days, but I think this is a little bit longer than thirty days um because of our, the way our meeting schedule works, so they, I think they're okay with it. If Becky's on, I know she's been in touch with them.
Okay.
And my other question, Greg, is, you know, it seems like every time you look at the report, the fire, fire uh department keeps having problems with the boiler.
Yeah.
Um, what's, what's the cost so far of of that, you know, ma- maintaining that boiler?
So that, that's a good question, I'll have to get the specific costs, so so fortunately, there's redundant boilers, so it's actually, it's actually multiple, I think. Uh they have, they have, they have, they have multiple.
Four sections, it says, yeah, two to four sections.
And so they, so it hasn't been so detrimental to to, you know, keep the the climate of of it, but, you know, I need to get, I'll get into the specifics for you of of what the cost had been to to get that boiler back up.
And then then the the uh the Beaver mitigation at Rockland Ave, how bad was that? Because it seems like you guys say you're addressing emergency um treatments there. At Rock, Rockland Avenue, it says there's a Beaver mitigation, there's an emergency Beaver mitigation, what does that mean, is that gonna?
Greg, I can speak to that.
Okay.
Armin, this is Justin DeMarco, DBW Director, so Beaver mitigation um happens uh at Rockland Ave and as well as Old Marlboro Road. Um because of the impacts of water quality in our well-source areas, um beavers are our enemy. Um they cause water discoloration, et cetera, they they create swamps, they do things that mess with our wells. Um, so for us to um mitigate beavers at this time, there's actually um a licensed timeline within um every year. That um trappers can trap beavers, we're outside of that zone, so when we come outside of that zone, if there's an impact to public. Health, we have to go through um the Board of Health to request uh a variance permit so that we can trap, and this is one of those situations. Um, since I've been here in September, we've trapped three times at Rockland Ave.
Is it all humane trapping?
Yes, that's correct, these are licensed trappers to the state, um but realistically, uh like I said, the the um. The timeline, the season for beaver trapping is over, but we, there is protocols within the Board of Health um and the state. Um if we can uh justify it under um public health, which this qualifies for that. Um especially at Rockland Ave, our our main water source, this is what it is, so.
There's been, there's been problems with the with uh with Beaver dams over on um at the Old Marlboro area for years. That at one point became really, really bad back probably ten or fifteen years ago. Um and um, you know, it was, you you know, as you could travel along right before, as you as you head into Sudbury. Um right before you get to the um soccer field that's closed off on the left-hand side. If you look out there, it's a huge marsh area that is there, and for years, there was no water there at all, but then Beaver Dam started causing that problem. You used to be able to see across, I think you might still be able to over to Justine's neighborhood from that area, and uh it's completely. Uh like marshland as a result of Beaver Dams, I know Bob McCarthy at one point was was on that. Big time, he he went out, I think he was, he was like uh Elmer Fudd out there fighting with the, with.
So Dave, so Dave, just uh to jump off of that, me and Bob were out there about a week ago.
Yeah, there you go.
In regards to.
I did not know that.
Some of the issues that we're dealing with at Old Marlboro Road, unfortunately, it's not the beavers that have completely funneled the Old Marlboro situation, it's the development. Um from the Sudbury Estates area uh that has really funneled what is happening there, there is remnants of an old dam, but it is uh inconsequential when it comes to uh the flow at that point. Rockland is another um aspect, they're actually causing flow backup, which is a real issue. Um once you have no flow, it creates organic matter, algae, et cetera, that these plants are not designed to handle, so. Mitigation is huge, beavers.
Alright, thanks, Justin.
Yeah. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, okay, so Chairman's report, that, all I have is, um Armin touched on it earlier, one fifteen Main Street. And um they're about to get into some hearings and some meetings to discuss uh one fifteen Main Street, I know that we all have a lot of um. Things on our plates, especially as we get towards town meeting and some of the other things going on around us in town, but. I would suggest that that's an important piece of property in the town of Maynard and that uh the the select board or Board of Selectment, I mean, we're calling ourselves these days that we we should really. Pay attention to the goings-on on that piece of property for a lot of different reasons and uh see where it goes, because there's there's potential that that could become. Uh horrendous eyesore to the town of Maynard if things don't go the right way and and people don't um. Uh, you know. Pay attention to the um. The process, because the process, from my standpoint, is is flawed and and it's gonna be upon the town in general to make some changes, but. It's a piece of property and a development that warrants a um some solid eyes on it other than those that are on it um as the planning board and others. I think that we ought to pay attention to it and and um, I know Armin will keep us up to date with the things that go on there, but it's it's something that bears are watching because it's. It it could be either a tremendous eyesore or it could end up being a um focal point for our downtown district. So it bears watching, that's all. Um, world member reports, Justine? Ward member reports, Justine?
I have nothing tonight. I know.
Melissa?
Greg, I just have a question, do we have any indication from higher ups if the stay at home order might be extended beyond May 18th? It just seems unlikely that we can go back to normal.
So I, I've, I've been reading the, the Mima reports that we get every day. I haven't seen anything outstanding that says, I mean, no, I mean, so no, in my opinion, I have not seen. That's not to say that someone hasn't heard something, Megan, have you heard anything?
From what I've heard, it's gonna be a phased approach, I think the task force is scheduled to deliver a report on May 18th. And so I don't expect anything to be different on May 19th, you know, like right away. I think it'll be a phase, you know, certain industries with certain standards will be able to open more, but. It does seem like we're, we're not gonna know much until kind of right up to that date, is my understanding.
And, and I'm sure it'll be based on counties and, and, you know, municipality, yeah.
Governor yesterday and.
County too, so.
Yeah.
The governor yesterday in a press conference or in his daily briefing commented that it's not gonna be a shotgun start. In other words, the guns, the starting gun's not gonna go off and everybody's gonna run to work and everything else, so I would anticipate at a minimum. There will be that first two week period of phased in businesses and then another two weeks after that of additional phase in. So I would anticipate not, that things aren't back to normal until at least a month after he. That sort of the original stage is lifted, that would be my guess, I'm, I'm planning on the end of June myself.
Yeah, and I was just asking too, I mean, we have a selectman meeting on the 19th, I assume we're gonna continue with Zoom.
Plan on that.
I was proposing a meeting on the 12th, if, oh, but, but yes.
I do like the 19th though.
Well, I need, I need the board to approve the warrant before it goes to publishing, but. That, yeah, so Melissa, I think you're right, I think that I, I, I would expect another Zoom meeting on, on, because. As David's point, everyone's point is, and I can hear on the news about how California is starting to do like a phased in opening and, and, and so. Yeah, I, I think it's gonna be slow and considering how tight Route 201 is in Town Hall.
Yeah.
We haven't, and we haven't even hammered all the details of another meeting place like the auditorium or otherwise. I, just to be safer than sorry, my recommendation would be to continue to Zoom meetings, I know it's not ideal, but I, I'm, we've been pretty effective.
No, I agree, I mean, I don't plan on leaving my house ever again, so it's working for me.
I will say that the, the, the research that I, I was in a meeting today, they were talking about. How apparently this, the, the research is showing that both, everybody wearing a mask. Is the new norm and they're expecting that to go on. MIT is expecting to have campus wide masks through the fall semester.
The phased approaches, that is the way they're gonna go, I've, I've heard the exact same thing. The mask was put in place because of the phased approach of opening and they want everybody prepared for that, but.
But apparently in the hospitals, they're finding out, I, I can't remember, I think it was Brigham, Brigham and Women's. They said that they had two cases, only two cases that were able to be traced to. Transfer from a patient to a, a medical care provider and they're attributing that to the PPE, including the mask. And that's where they're, you know, they're saying that, you know, we're gonna see people in masks for months to come.
No, that's all, just curious.
Yeah, I've got three items, first off, some of you may have seen the, the editorial that was posted. It was, it was in the Metro West Daily News, but it was also posted online by Kate Hogan. And attached with Jamie Eldridge's name relative to the, the availability of CPA funds. For rental assistance, and then as you know, that the, part of the warrant article for, one of the warrant articles for this year's. Already prior to town meeting was an attempt by the, the Maynard Affordable Housing Trust. To seek funds for just this purpose, now because the housing trust is so brand, is so new. We don't have a devised plan as to how to send out the money and how to choose who, who gets these, this assistance. It would obviously, it actually would go to landlords, not to individual family members to help offset the costs for people. Who have problems meeting their, their rental costs, so the Affordable Housing Trust is planning on still pursuing that. And now with this added burden of, that people are facing relative to, you know, the shutdown and economic issues. That, that families are facing, there's an, there's an added urgency on many families' needs relative to rental assistance. So I believe there is, well, we are planning to meet next Wednesday, the Affordable Housing Trust. And one of our items on the agenda will be the discussion of seeking further funds from the CPA. Through a request through the CPA that would probably come forth for the fall town meeting. To try to get additional funds, we don't have, you know, the original request was like $25,000, it was only gonna be able to help five or 10 families at most. And even if we go for additional funds, it's not unlimited, but we might be able to spread either, cutting the amount that we were gonna dedicate to each family back. Or whatever, so we can help more people, something along those lines, we're exploring a process that we don't have a plan as to how to get those funds out. So there was research being done on other communities, namely, I think Bolton's got, got a plan, if I'm not mistaken. That was being used as sort of a prototype, but more to come on it, but I want the residents to be aware that Maynard's progressive on this issue. It's not, we're, we're not reacting to, to Kate's and Jamie's editorial. We already were on this and, you know, the, the five members of the, of the Affordable Housing Trust. Were, had been working on it for, for a little bit of time, so it's good for Maynard and it's good for those who are in need and there are a lot of people that are in need. And then I think that this will be helpful if we can get it going, so more to come, but I just wanted everyone to be aware of that.
David, just, I'm sorry, just real quick, I also wanna let you know that I, I think I forwarded something to Donna Dodson, who's also on the Affordable Housing Trust. Because Hudson also, their Affordable Housing Trust has also set up something similar to assist with rentals, so I'm not sure if that's one of the ones that you guys are looking.
Yeah, Donna's, Donna's involved in researching the, the various communities that, that are out there. So she's working on it. So anyway, the, we're meeting next Wednesday and that will be one of the topics along with, I think, an approval of something down at. The View or something along those lines. The second item, I got an email from somebody who was commenting of their disappointment that because WAVM's antenna was shut down. We no longer get access in Maynard to WBUR and so I don't know, because their antenna broadcasts. WAVM's antenna broadcasts WBUR, so we get a better reception, I guess, here in Maynard. Somebody asked if it was possible, if, if indeed the antenna had been shut down, if it was possible to turn it back on. But I don't know if it is or is not, because I don't know the details about it, but that's just something to look into. And the last thing I wanted to comment on was, there's been some, a lot of rumblings out there about golf courses. And how the golf courses should be allowed to open and that, you know, you can safely, you know, social distance without golf courses. And I saw that some golf course in Massachusetts was going to defy the governor's order. And open despite the fact that they've been ordered specifically not to, and I just wanted to make sure that because we have a municipal golf course. We should not be encouraging the, the folks, and not, not that they are going to. But if they ever indicate that they're gonna open up and defy the governor's order as a municipal golf course, I would be totally opposed to that. We have to set the example and follow the governor's orders just like everybody else should, so if we can get that message to them, if there's ever any in the police chief. If, if you hear rumblings that the golf course, you know, and obviously I can't speak for the entire community and for the entire board. But my feeling is that if, if the governor's order says no golf course, no public golf, golfing. The municipal, municipal golf courses should not be the ones to violate that. And not that I think they will, but they did post on their Facebook page today, Maynard, you know, the, whatever their name is. For under Maynard Golf Course, hey, this is happening in Massachusetts and somebody's gonna defy, and I just don't want our golf course to be one of the ones defying.
I read on Kate's, on Kate Hogan's website that she's, it's actually being considered as one of the things that may open in.
And that, that would be fine if that happened, I just don't want them to violate, you know, to go ahead of the, the, the order from the governor.
Having sat with them Thursday on a call conference, you know, call similar to this. The, the owner of that, that company, Sterling Golf, is involved in the Superintendent's Association. Because he was a long time superintendent and also he's part of the owners group that's been lobbying. They have absolutely no intention of violating anything, they're gonna, when the government says you can go, you can go. The woman who owns the two golf courses that are in question is Kettlebrook in, Kettlebrook in Wachusett. Her family has plenty of dough, she can fight the governor all day long because she's part of the family that owns Polar Beverage. That owns Wachusett Ski Resort as well, so there's no, there's no, you know, no shortage, the odd thing about that is, her mother-in-law. Was one of the first people to die in Massachusetts from this thing. Her mother-in-law was one of the first people in the state to die of the coronavirus, so she understands it from all angles, but she's just saying, look, I, I have to generate income. And my family depends on this and my employees depend on this and. By the way, of the, you know, contiguous states, 45 of the 48 are open for golf. Massachusetts, Vermont and Maryland are the only three that aren't, and kind of that's her point. But we see how brave she is when somebody tells her how much it's gonna cost her a day in violations, she hasn't opened the doors yet. She's talking about it, anyway.
That's it for me.
But I, I don't think Maynard, the Maynard Golf Club folks are, they're gonna be the ones to push the envelope, especially based on our conversation with them Thursday. They'd love to be open, but they know they can't be until such time as they're allowed, so.
Yeah, I got just one thing and it's a real positive thing, those of you that haven't seen, The Globe today. Had an article about Arts Face and Jerry Beck, there's a little sculpture that's, that he's driving around town. And it's a Corona Crown Project, it's called, and it's a mask sculpture. And I don't know if you guys could see anything like that, but.
Lift it up, up higher, up higher.
Yeah, so it's kind of cool, so it's going around Boston area all over the place and, and it was in The Globe and I think that's pretty cool. It's a, it's a good, positive.
Is that front page?
No, it, it's in a section called, it's in the arts section, so it's called the Art Caravan, but it's kind of cool.
Arts are one of those.
Yeah, so it's kind, this is actually closer, look at that.
I just posted it on Facebook, so if you look at.
Oh, did you? Oh, okay, cool.
I just was doing that earlier, so if you're.
I just, I thought that was really cool, so, yeah, it was.
I tow trucks and trailers all over the country and get inspected all the time, I don't know how that thing is rolling.
I know, right, it's, it's an old 47.
My God, I love it, but things are awesome though.
Yeah.
You gotta read all the, it take you an hour to do it, but you gotta read all the little stickers and everything on it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's pretty cool. Jerry's doing a lot.
That's, yeah.
Arts place in the town, I can tell you that.
Yeah, but that's all I got.
All right, so the next meeting is the 12th, Greg is assured, it's, it's gonna be a short agenda, Melissa? Anyways.
Sure.
I'm doing it from here.
Yeah, yeah, I guess we'll all be in the same places, I'll make a motion to adjourn. I guess all in favor, just raise your hand, visual, that's five, next meeting is the 12th, thanks everybody for participation. Thank you Greg, thank you Megan, everybody else, thanks Mike for coming.
Yep, see you next week.
See you guys next week.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a great night.